I declare the April 14th meeting of the zoning board of appeals open. Attendance, we have Phil Suve, Ed Burke.
President.
President.
Pat Schwartz.
Here.
Linda Donovan is here, our lawyer Joe Mariello is here, and Joe Dosso?
Dosso.
Dosso is not yet here, but we expect him to be here. We have several public hearings, the first is CVS, and CVS has requested another continuation until the May meeting, so I will entertain a motion that we continue the CVS public hearing until May.
Just before we do that.
I'm sorry.
We can keep this open as long as they request, correct Joe?
We can, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been open for what, about six months?
It's certainly been a while.
It's been four or five. The only issue might be if they do decide to pursue it and want back on the agenda, the span and the length of time, we should probably publish another notice of public hearing.
And they were in front of the planning board last night, correct?
They were, I saw Charlie, the attorney, but I don't, I wasn't here for the meeting.
They were just there in the traffic side.
Right.
And I know it's a, it's an issue that seems to be generating a lot of attention in the town, so if they are going to be back on the May agenda, we're going to publish it again? Is that what we're saying? We should?
Well, it's posted, the agenda is posted, it's posted on Lexon.
Listen, may I ask, is, the rumor I heard is that they are looking at Joe's east-west, is there any truth in that?
I don't, I don't, I am not aware of any application that's before any municipal board for that application.
Okay, this is rumored.
And Kelly would know if there's anything in front of the planning board.
Okay.
So far as last night's meeting, everything is still moving ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I will make the motion that we...
Continue?
Continue the public hearing on CVS through the May meeting.
Seconded by Pat?
Yeah.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously. Then we're ready for the, oh, Mr. Dosso. Please note that Joe Dosso is here, and those of us who haven't met him, this is our latest member, Joe Dosso. Phil Suve, Ed Burke, Pat Schwartz, and of course, I'm Linda Donovan, and Joe Mariello is our lawyer. Okay. Oh, here it is. The next public hearing is the Vecchio application, and I'll entertain a motion that we open the public hear, hearing for that application.
So moved?
Moved by Pat, seconded. Phil, in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously, okay. Whichever one of you would like to speak, suppose you come up here, or both of you, of What I would ask you to do is to very briefly summarize your application, what it is you're asking for, and why you're asking for it, so that the public can hear it.
I'm asking for...
Loud though, not to me, to that public.
To the public, that's facing humans.
I know. I understand.
Just talk loud, you have a booming voice.
Surround, surround sound, that's what it is. Well, essentially, what I need is a shed, a twelve-by-sixteen foot shed, and I need a variance of thirteen feet from the side property, because we don't have any storage space number one, and the original house had two garages taken away by previous owners, and we're faced with a situation of not being able to reach the shed if we put it too far back, because of the disabilities that we have, and the snow and all this other stuff that's been going on. And do the best we can under the circumstances. Essentially, we need a storage space. You know, if I get a riding mower, I'm going to have to put it in there, and a lot of, a lot of space to put whatever it is that we have stored.
Snow blower?
Snow blower.
I had asked you to bring documentation of the limitations, fiscal limitations that you have.
Yes, we have them.
Thank you.
But I don't want to, people make copies of their product, and medical laws and stuff like that. Well...
You need, you need these.
Yes.
Or is this a copy for us to keep?
No, well, it's a copy for me.
This is yours?
That's mine, yes. And that shows I took out the, the part of the claim number from the veteran's.
Let me, let me just add, in fairness to the applicant, if the board considers it, it's gonna, it's gotta be part of the record.
Wait, what has to be part of the record? This?
Whatever they give you.
Yes.
And they should know that. If, if it's part of the record, it is available under the Freedom of Information law, anybody asking to see any part of the record can get copies of anything that's in the record.
Well, that's not a problem with that. I would ask that the rest of the VA number, the claim number be removed.
I, we could redact it as to identifying information like a claim number, but the contents, just so you know, it's in the record.
Okay.
It's a public record.
And both of...
What about the HEPA?
It's, it's why I'm saying to you what I'm saying.
We...
If you, if you don't want to put it in, you don't have to put it in. If you voluntarily put it in, it becomes part of the record.
And this is...
And it's disposable. Kelly, for the record, the two of you understand what I've indicated to you? Do you still want to put in the documentation that you are going to offer?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. Subject to, I think we can and should redact claim numbers, social security numbers, or anything like that.
Yes, yes. The only thing, just glancing at this, the only thing that is relevant to us is the section that says, really primarily, VA benefits information, service connected disability, yes. Your combined service connected evaluation is, and this one's is ten percent. The effective date of the last change to your current award was December 1st, 2014, and then there's a monthly award amount that we do not need, and that can certainly be redacted.
My question, Joe, is does this run with the property, one with the title, if it's granted? How does that affect the...
Yes.
I, I, that's one of the issues that we spoke about at the last meeting. Variants is run with the land, they're not personal to an owner, and so a particular owner's personal needs has really rarely supported an application for a variance. It's something that if the applicant wants you to consider, you may, but because the variance runs with the land, the idea that there is some personal need on the part of the, of the applicant for health reasons is something to be considered, but it may not really be a factor. You're still bound by the balancing test of those five factors is really the idea.
But if we grant the variance because of the personal need, what happens when he sells his property?
If the variance is granted that way, it's a variance granted, it runs with the land. That's why it's sometimes so difficult to grant them because of a personal need basis. And usually, the applicants would want to concentrate on the five issues that the planning board has to look at statutorily, and maybe lessen the reliance on the personal health factors. But on the other hand, people are people, and the board is entitled to hear it.
So there's no such thing as a conditional variance, is what you're saying?
Yeah. In cases like this, it would be extremely difficult, I think, to put the condition on it that says, you can have the shed there as long as you are the one, or both of you are the owners, but when the last leaves, the shed has to be taken down.
That would be enforced.
Yeah, that would be, I think it might be a difficult condition to enforce.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's part of the reason why I'm here now, because there was two sheds on the property before, and they couldn't move them because of the snow. There was a lot of snow last time, we were really closed. So they had to take them away, and we were counting on the space.
Well, they had to take them away because they weren't approved.
I have no idea.
That was the previous owner, you're talking about?
Yeah, the previous owner. So we thought we were going to have the shed for storage.
The sheds had to come out?
It was late in the process when we found out.
Well, there were anything to...
And all this other stuff.
Yeah.
I, I think last night, you said that it got down, it got down close to the closing date.
Close to the closing date. And all this other stuff.
Let me clarify this, because I'm not sure that we even, we'll need a copy if I read this into the record for you again. This is from the Department of Veteran Affairs, 245 West Houston Street, New York, New York, and it's addressed to Salvatore Vecchio, Lola Drive, New Falls. And the relevant part of the information is what I just read to you about ten percent service connected disability. Do you think we need a copy now, Joe? I mean, you know, that's going to be in the minutes, one of the...
If, if, I mean, if the board doesn't feel that it wants the entire document, it doesn't have to take it.
For me, if it was read into the record, I'm fine with him having it back.
I'll pass it along. How's that?
Okay, in addition to that, I have additional documentation for myself. I've recently been diagnosed with spinal stenosis, and that's not going to help me at all, but I have to walk around, and here's a documentation on that, that's before I get the heart, she has a hundred percent disability, if she has to use, same thing happens to me, somebody has to maintain the property, and I don't know if she'd be able to do it. And this is her parking, uh, disability.
These are the applications for disability parking.
What, what is spinal stenosis?
It's something with the lower part of the spine, the...
It's a narrowing of the spine, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I had it.
Yeah.
So I know exactly what it is, it's a narrowing of the spine, and it puts pressure on the nerve, and it, it makes it sometimes difficult, and your leg goes numb.
Uh-huh. If I had legs, I don't even know if I have them sometimes.
I've had my spine fused.
You have had your spine fused?
Yes, I have.
This is our documentation, Phil.
This is for, okay, these two documents deal with Mrs. Vecchio's disability, and this is, she, this is the application for disability parking. She's severely limited in her ability to walk due to an arthritic neurological or orthopedic condition, and this is from the doctor, I believe, yes, that's a medical. She has a history of spinal stenosis, which required a spinal fusion between her fourth and fifth lumbar vertebrae, and is now permanently disabled. Currently, she still has back pain, cannot sit for prolonged periods, requires to use a pillow when she does sit down. Also, Mrs. Boniano has been di, which is Mrs. Vecchio, has been diagnosed with Meniere's disease, and ear nose and throat, which causes recurrent episodes of vertigo.
It also makes it difficult to be moving when I fall. That might be a good thing, sometimes, in my house.
For the record.
Speak for yourself, Ed. Thank you, thank you for bringing that in.
You're welcome. Thank you for considering it, if you consider it.
Okay. Does board have any questions of the Vecchiros about their application at this point?
Would you mind if you went through this for me, because I have missed the last few meetings since I was in Florida and you were in New York? I was in a better place than you. So I missed those couple of meetings, if you would just kind of describe it to me, perhaps it would lay it out for the board as well.
Meetings?
No, no, no.
Or the diagram?
What's your, what's your attempt to do?
The distance between the property line and the corner of the house is thirty-one feet nine inches, eight inches, I'm sorry. You can see the line going across down at the bottom. On the right side, you'll see a seven foot, that's the, the distance it would be from, from the fence, the property line. There's a requirement of twenty feet from the property line and twelve feet from the house.
The sideline.
And it would be difficult to put anything there, because if you have twenty and twelve is thirty-two feet, and the total distance is thirty-one feet eight inches, and it becomes a dilemma. And it's going to be approximately two feet from the end of the driveway, to the, to the side of the, well, actually, the other side of the shed, from the front.
If I could, I know, just one second, where is the opening for the shed going to be?
Oh, the opening? I want, I'm going to put it right in the front.
The door, like?
A door.
Straight up the driveway to the shed?
Because of how much the garage is always be, would be the ideal situation, especially if you can't move too driven moving around.
Do you have a garage, sir?
No, there was two garages in the house. Originally, it was modified by the previous owners, whatever reason.
Two garages were underneath, underneath.
Okay. So, so you don't have a garage, so you, you will still not have a garage?
No, I won't have a garage.
So you will have the storage shed, so you park your cars outside somewhere, here?
Yeah, in the driveway.
Okay.
And downstairs, my daughter is there with a child, and that's another daughter.
So that's a separate apartment?
Well, it's an apartment, it's a mother-daughter, there's no, no separate entrance, other than the side of the garage side, and the main entrance up on top.
This, to me, this drawing shows the shed as being almost as big as the house.
Well, yeah, well, it's not designed by a professional.
No, it's not the scale.
It's twelve by sixteen.
My squiggly on the side over there represents continuation.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's, the shed is twelve by sixteen, the house is probably twelve by twenty-four or something.
That might help you a little.
Yes.
Is this a pre-bath shed?
Uh, no, it's going to be built, a friend of mine is going to, he's going to, if he comes up from Florida.
And there's a tree right on the rear.
Okay.
That's not on this.
And there's a septic field behind here somewhere?
No, the septic field's in front of the house, somewhere around here.
Well, then the well has to be back here somewhere.
The well's all the way into that.
Yeah, way back, okay.
It's a long one, and I use a power mower push right now, pushes itself.
How did, how did you come up with the size of the shed at ten by sixteen?
Twelve by sixteen.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I like to change.
Yeah.
Well, for storage, because there's stuff we're going to be putting in there. Utility of the shed is not going to be what a full shed should be, it's going to be sort of like a, a storage unit between the kids and, and our stuff that we have no place to put. And I'm planning on making a, sort of like a loft, on a, almost a barn-type house, shed if possible, I don't know if we can do that, just so we can throw some stuff up there.
So you, so you, the dimension of the shed is twelve by sixteen?
Twelve by sixteen.
How high is it going to be? Because that, that is important to know.
It's going to be between ten and twelve feet, I think, you said, something like that, with the, the ceiling being eight feet.
Do you have a drawing of what kind of a shed you're putting up there? Is it wood, is it?
Materials are probably going to be CDX, CDX, old pressure-treated wood and stuff like that, that's what he told me.
Do you have roof, what?
It's going to have a roof, it's going to have a roof. The height, if the height is a problem, we could lower it, it's not a big deal, I mean, nine, even nine feet, it's got to be, I would need something that's going to be able to get attractive in there, for a lawn mower, at least, you know.
To Vecchio, what kind of shed was there when you thought you bought that house?
There was two of them, there was, one of them, I think, was a ten by twelve, and the other one might have been an eight by twelve, or something like that, or an eight by ten.
Where, where were they?
They were, I included a copy of the original survey.
Survey?
Survey. They were, you have it.
I have it here.
As fast as I know.
So one is, okay, one is way back here, which would be way back here somewhere, right?
Nope, that's still right where the house, he's basically looking to put it where the, the previous sheds were.
Oh, okay. And then there was another one?
They were side by side.
Oh, they were side by side, okay.
Actually, I'm, I'm giving more leeway on that side of the fence than it was there before, I think I had six feet, something like that.
So these two that were there before are no bigger than this one that you're planning to build?
Oh, those were bigger, there was more room in there.
Oh.
I think it came up to twenty-two feet tall, or something like that, I don't remember exactly, because all of a sudden, they were gone, you know.
We also have another house in New Windsor, that we have to move the stuff from the garage into the shed when we get it.
We have stuff that has to come, still, there's a room right now.
That's, that's not something that we can kill.
No, no, that's okay.
That's not our problem.
No, just telling you so that you would know.
It's a smaller house.
So the entrance to your, you said you have two entrances to your house?
Yeah, one right...
One in the front?
One in front, one right behind the end of the driveway on the...
Okay, on the back side, I remember now, yes.
I remember, used to work.
That's a little while.
I saw it once as well, but that was in New Windsor, that's a long time ago.
I was there. I'm always there. But you know, being a senior, it's not easy to maintain, you wonder why you have to find another house.
No, the only other question, and we'll have an opportunity for comments, I suspect, okay, is it a permanent foundation that it's going to go on?
No, it's going to be on, on the four-by-fours, it can be moved.
Does that make a difference? No?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, because if the variance is granted, as Joe has pointed out...
Regardless of the foundation, okay, all right, that's the only question I have, thank you.
And at this point, I'll ask if there's anyone, Joe?
I just have a question. Ed, Kelly, Ed asked about the height. Isn't there some requirement that the detached building can't be higher than the distance that it is from the house?
Yeah, it can't be less than twelve feet or the height of the shed.
All right, so in this case, the leading edge of the proposed shed is...
It's going to be twelve feet eight inches.
Is it going to be about twelve feet or so from the house, and it can't be, it's got to be twelve feet or not higher than that distance?
Uh-huh.
So it can't be higher than that distance. I think the idea is if the shed, if something happened and there was a fire and the shed fell over, it wouldn't collapse into that house.
Basically, wouldn't issue a building permit for it.
Right.
Okay.
That means the ceiling is seven feet, eight feet.
Mr. Vecchio?
Yes.
You're asking us to approve a variance for a shed that, I don't know what the dimensions are. Is he moving around on the size?
Well, it depends on whether or not, I would like to have it as high as possible to make the law.
Okay, but what does that mean, is, I guess, what I'm asking?
I'm flexible.
That doesn't...
I want a need for specification.
That doesn't help me.
Well, it, it will be less than twelve feet, I'll put it that, it might be eleven and a half, if the distance is twelve, I'd make it eleven and a half. I have no problem with it, you know.
So, are you asking us to consider a twelve-by-sixteen shed no higher than eleven and a half feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Want to specify that, Kelly?
And the, the shed is going to be made out of what? The siding is going to be what?
CDX, something like that, I don't know.
I don't know what CDX is.
T-111?
What is it?
It's called texture 111.
Oh, okay.
It's actually, it's got grooves in it, so it looks like it's finished, you can tell you're going to have to repair it.
I'd like you to put a qualification.
Texture 111?
Yeah.
But is that what it's going to be, is my question?
Yes, that's it. I got all kinds of stuff, roof is CDX, roof of the highest point seven to eight feet, you know, that, that's, that's irrelevant at this point. Going to have thirty year shingle, I don't know if that means anything to anybody.
Going to have what?
Thirty year shingle.
On the roof?
Yeah. So, it'll be there after all that.
You're reading from something?
No, it was my notes from...
Oh, those are just your notes?
Somebody's notes.
No, I thought maybe it was a proposal for the building.
Did you get a chance to go out and look at that?
No, I got T-111, I had it, it's just, no problem.
That's what, that's what he told me, he would put off for me, if he T-111, it'll have the windows and stuff.
No, he's okay with it.
Fence, too.
It's going to have a peaked roof or a flat roof?
It's going to be half peak, I guess like a barn, something like that, goes this way and this way, just so I could put, almost like a loft, not a full loft there, something hanging over, because I'm not going to be ten feet tall, or anything like that, something we could put stuff up there, if it's...
And let's specify that too, Kelly.
Well, you're not going to get a barn, barn roof with, with a twelve, eleven and a half foot, you're going to need more than that.
Why?
Because what happens is, you're going to have to, because of distance, the width of, I'm sorry to get technical here.
Please do.
This is what I do.
We need, we need no more accuracy than we've been getting, so please.
Okay, so what, what happens is, if you, if you split this distance to twelve feet, you're going to get, let's say, probably like a seven-foot rafter, okay, at a, at a three pitch, meaning every, every three feet, that's one inch, okay, of rise, okay, so basically, it's almost going to be a flat roof, okay, to, to get to that, that eleven six. So it's either going to be almost a flat roof with a pitch on one side, he's going to have to use, it's called split sheet, singles, where you, you roll it out, which is fine, it's a good shingle, it's, it's one piece, it'll never leak, but he's not going to be able to get that barn, because you're going to need some height, because don't forget that, you got, on one side, you got a roof that comes down, like a normal roof, and then what happens is, it starts to straighten out on the sides, so...
I won't need a lot of room.
You're going to get a gable, and, and, and plus, you know, so it has to go...
Won't be a high gable.
Yeah, so it's either you're going to have to shorten the shed, you know, you're going to have to have either six-foot high walls to get that kind of a, a shape, or if you go to eight foot, you're, you're going to be up around fourteen feet to, to get that type of roof, seriously.
Which you cannot do because of the total...
The type of roof that he would like to have, he would have to change the design, have to deal with a shed reform.
So...
What about a, a regular picture?
Did you go for, did you go for a gable roof?
It won't be a...
I don't need a gable.
Well, that's okay, that's, that's fine, I'll put that, I have no problem with that.
You had provided this to us last time you were here.
Yeah, it was just a...
So this...
That's pretty much, that'd be good enough for me. I need a place to put the stuff, if I have to make a roof like that, I will do that.
I know, I'm just trying to understand what the shed's going to look like.
It'll look like that, maybe not as nice.
Can I see that?
That's a, your typical shed.
Yeah, it's a gable roof, there you go, no problem. But it won't be that high.
Right. We aren't going to get much overhead storage.
It's okay. Well, if, if the lowest part of the roof is going to come to what, eight feet, something like that?
Well, yeah, if you got an eight-foot side, it's going to be eight foot, so you're going to have maybe three, maybe three foot, if you're lucky, you know, of space to the top.
Can I put eighteen inches out there?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I need, I can watch you and just look in there. Store it all in there, let it rot. I can't even look at my instruments anymore, doesn't matter.
Gentlemen, thank you for joining us, we're very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
We understand that you're New Falls High School students, and this, of course, is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals, as somebody wants to find it, it's the board that lets people do things that are against the law.
Not a problem, I think, I just have to remember, I got to change this X by noise by really...
But you were going to, you were going to open it up to the public comment, and then I jumped in, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I will have a comment, I don't know if this is the right time.
This is fine, fine time to say it, by my own instinct.
And obviously, I'm going to defer to some of your experience through this process, but as I look at it, okay, we are here to enforce zoning code, we're not here to make them, we're not here to amend them, we're here to enforce what's in place, but when there are extenuating circumstances, okay, and gray areas, then we're here to assess that. But when there are extenuating circumstances, okay, and gray areas, then we're here to assess that and make comments on the gray areas. For me, if you had, if you were just looking for this variance for no real reason other than to make it convenient, I would say, no, you've got a million other options, and I've been there and I've seen them, okay? But you are claiming a physical challenge, a handicap challenge. And the fact that that could impact future owners, to me personally, does not disqualify it from being considered, okay? Because at this point in time, I think it's worth considering. So my opinion, and I'm not making a judgment or decision, but my opinion is that it's worth considering if there is a physical challenge or handicap issue, regardless of the fact that it could become a permanent situation. So that's my comment.
How does the neighbors feel about...
And that's what we're going to hear from the public hearing.
Right.
Shall I ask?
Yeah.
If there's anybody...
May I say something? I submitted three letters from neighbors, I had more.
He submitted letters the last time he was here from the neighbors.
Not objecting. The one on that particular side?
Both, both sides, I guess.
Yeah, nine more. We have a letter from the Beauchamps, Elena and Diane, with no objection. And seven more, drive. Well, you gave twenty Maplebrook, which I'm not sure if that really has an impact. That's a full separate road. So we have seven Laura, and we have fifteen Laura. Who's eleven Laura?
Eleven, it's, I think it's across the street. There's two mailboxes, side by side, on the driveway next to me. They're fourteen, I think, right? Joe's working.
You're nine. You're nine. Seven should be to your left. Who's to your right?
I think it's fourteen.
Oh, who?
It should be.
Oh, Joe, I can't remember his name. Turain, Turain?
All right, Joe Turain's here. He's fifteen Laura, so there must have been a miss.
It's fifteen.
All right. And here, this letter says it's planning to build a replacement shed. It's not a replacement shed.
Well, at first, it would have been, at first, it would have been...
Okay. This should be in the record, right? Okay, so there are letters from the neighbors. You might want to see if anybody else in the public.
Okay, let me open this up to the public. Are there any comments from the public regarding this application? Okay. All right, I will then go over the five criteria for an area variance in your application. That's page three, if you'd like to follow along. Looks like it's good idea, okay. All right, the applicant should be prepared to address the following considerations at the time of the meeting. Please just answer loud and clearly, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
No.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
Not, no, not with the situation that I have with our...
Whether the requested area variance is substantial.
That's not for me to determine. It's the rules of the town. I would say that's more than fifty percent.
Yes. I would assume then that you would say, as you should, that it is a substantial request.
Yes, it is a substantial request.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district.
No.
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the board, the zoning board of appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance.
No.
Was not self-created.
It was not self-created. It's an act of God.
An act of God.
Act of God. I used to live in church. Act of God, okay.
And the board, any comments from the board regarding this application?
I do.
Yes.
And I'm having a tough time with this because I want to be sympathetic to your plight because of your, because of your situation. B, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. I'm having a challenge with that. You have a large piece of property that the shed can be moved. I understand why you want it where you want it, but I want to make sure that our new board members understand. And Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, when we approve a variance, we're basically setting a precedence for other people who will come in front of us. I understand there was a shed there, and I can understand why you feel you should be entitled to put a shed there. And when we were out there talking, it was, is there a way for us to put this shed in a different position where you're not requesting such a large variance? I mean, you're looking for seventy percent relief, basically, and how big or how small is that? You're putting it basically right on the property line, and not knowing what the shed is going to look like. I'm having a hard time getting warm to it. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Yes, no, I can argue both sides on that, but you have a lot of space in which you can put the shed on your property without needing a variance or without needing as great of a variance, so I just wanted to put that out there.
And I'm glad you did because I'm having, you know, personally, I'm having the same reservations. It was requested, I think, at our last meeting, that you reconsider the size of this shed, which does seem to me unusually large. Well, basically, point B in the questions, whether the benefit can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, I would think that that might be the case indeed.
And within your neighborhood, you have had other people who have had to have moved their sheds. Because there was, I understand you don't, but I do. I know that other people have had to move their sheds because they were too close to the property lines. That's kind of the comments I wanted to make.
And do you have any idea where this shed could go? It would be fulfilling of his needs with a...
You can go within twenty feet of the property line, take the well out. And you can't put it here. It is challenged because there is a tree there. But you could possibly move the shed, turn the shed sideways and move it in, and still be far enough away from the house. But it's a challenge. I understand it's a challenge for you.
I have also been troubled by the lack of specificity, you know, regarding this application. As Ed implied, if we had an illustration of the shed, it seems that when you're here, things keep changing. And I find some difficulty with that.
May I say something?
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's going to look like that shed there.
I'm sorry?
It'll look like that shed there.
What shed?
The one that the picture, that somebody showed me before. No, no. Mr. Burke had that there. Well, it's going to resemble it. It may not look like it. It may not look, might be a flatter roof.
But you see, this is exactly what I'm talking about. It may not look like this. They have a flatter roof, and that would make a difference to me.
Are you saying I should hire somebody who can work with a AutoCAD or an engineer or a builder like him, just to give me a diagram?
I don't know if you have to hire somebody, but I certainly think...
My background is not.
Yes, then I would say, yes, you do. If that's what you want, and you want the approval of this board, then you should, all right? If you cannot do it yourself, then you should.
Mr. Beckio, there is a shed company right on Route Nine. That's where I bought my shed. And you may decide to go there and ask him if he has a twelve-by-sixteen shed, which is similar to this, which is what your builder is going to replicate.
Well, he's going to build. He does build, but not here. He's in Florida, he's a friend. And I'm going to help him, at his direction, of course. And he's doing it for me, so there is a cause factor.
Let me just offer this. Kelly, to get a building permit for the shed, there's going to have to be a set of plans, right?
Correct.
I mean, whether those plans come commercially from Lowe's or Home Depot, or they come from an architect, or the building department at some point is going to need the kind of plans and specs that Mr. Burke and Linda are talking about, okay? It's going to have to show the dimensions, it's going to have to show the construction, so at some point, you're going to need those anyway, A. B, I think what the board is saying is they would like to see exactly what this is going to do or look like for the purposes of the record, because if they were to approve the variance, there really can't be any wiggle room between the variants.
How much time do I have to get this to you now?
Well, maybe by the next meeting, if you...
When will the next meeting be?
It will be next month, I assume. It'll be the May meeting.
I think it's the twelfth, May twelfth.
But, and just let me, let me ask you this. I'm looking at this diagram, and it appears that the shed, and I'm assuming there's going to be an overhead door in the center of the shed, which is right about centered with the center of the driveway.
An overhead door?
Over, are you going to have an overhead door?
A garage, preferably.
Garage door?
I don't know if I can afford it, but I'll see if I can get it. That's what I want to do, yes. That's what I want to have.
All right, but, you know, is there some reason why this whole, this shed can't move so that the one edge of the shed would be coincident with the edge of the house? And it would give less variance required on this side by the property line?
Yes, it's a movement.
And still keep the door open to the driveway?
Eight inches. To meet the requirements for the twelve feet, I could move the property line eight inches.
It's the height problem.
Uh-huh. As it gets closer to the house?
As it gets closer to the house, it's the height problem, unless it moves back in the yard. And the problem with moving back in the yard is the tree.
If I can add to your thoughts though, Joe, Mr. Beckio, what if we just turned it, lengthwise being this way? And then in this corner is the entrance, okay, so it's more behind the house. You got, you have room to move it back closer to the tree because you're turning it instead of hugging the line and having, when, once it's turned, the entrance being here. I mean, is that a thought?
I thought about it, and I would have to sell my property because I don't like it.
Because what?
I would have to sell my property and get out of New Paul's.
Why?
Because I don't like...
You don't like it?
I don't like the proximity. It, I bought this place, of course, there was room in the back that I could see. I don't have, I don't have claustrophobia, but I like to see a little bit of space.
I know you've mentioned this before, the first time you were here, that you wanted the shed in this location because you wanted to have a view of your backyard.
Well, anybody who knows me knows I'm a very flexible person, and I will not ask for anything in my years of work. All the times I worked, I was always honest and told the truth, which got me into trouble. And I wasn't afraid of it. I'm never afraid of anything, and I speak my piece. I'm sure people, maybe on this border, have things on their property that they know might not be within the control of today. I wouldn't be surprised.
And also too, this isn't just a tree. There is roots that are thick, coming out of the ground. And we'd have to break those roots in order to make it flat for the...
Deserve it.
For the thing to be there.
It's a financial thing as well, you know, besides the aesthetic. I want it to look aesthetically good.
So I just, can I follow on?
Yeah, please.
So the shed here, if you were to turn the shed sideways, and instead of looking for thirteen feet of relief, you're only looking for, say, six feet of relief, without having to do anything to the tree or ruining the roots, I imagine that your view from your backyard is from the depth, which would still give you a line of sight that you like. Are you flexible to that, or are you not flexible to that? Or do you want us to consider the plan specifically as you have it?
Well, to me, it would be, it would look like an alleyway, and I don't like alleyways.
So my question was, are you flexible to having the shed the other way? Or do you want us to consider the shed specifically how this plan is?
How far behind the house, to the left of the house, would it protrude? It's going to be twenty feet from here, from the property line, and twelve feet away from the house. Is that correct? That means there'll be about twelve feet, another thirteen feet, it's thirty-one, it's about thirty-two feet, fourteen feet into the house.
It would give you more parking.
Parking is...
It would change, it would change. The parking's the same. The driveway stops right here, so if this was shifted that way, the park, the park wouldn't change.
We have to consider, if we consider a smaller shed?
I was just going to raise that issue. That had been raised, I think, at the last meeting as well, that you might just want to do that, consider a smaller shed.
Twelve by twelve would look like a barn.
Twelve by twelve still does not do anything to alleviate the seven, the thirteen feet of relief that you're looking for.
I don't know what to say.
Well, let me put it to you this way. Would you like us to vote on this application tonight? Or would you like to, once again, and you've done this several times, you know, postponed it, to rethink?
It's already cost me two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Vote on it tonight, and let it be.
Vote on it tonight?
Yes.
I, I, I heard what you said, but I would love it if you would reconsider that and come back with specifically what you want to have built and not something that I'm imagining in my head, because I can't put what I'm imagining in my head in the record.
Well, the whole thing is really the variance, and the location is very important.
Understood, but you, I think...
I've seen places that I wouldn't want to live in because of that, but...
I hope you can understand that the position that this board is in is, we have to approve variances for every piece of property. And like I said earlier, we're setting a precedence, and just like, you just made a statement that you've seen things that you wouldn't want to live in. And if you wind up having sheds seven feet from the property line on every property in this town, there would be other people who would echo that same statement that you made.
Wouldn't bother me. That wouldn't bother me.
There are certain, there are certain things that bother you. There are certain things that bother other people. We have to take all of this into consideration, so...
How would you feel, Mr. Beckio, if you, as you have a right to do, requested that the board vote on this, and the board refused your application and denied it?
The law is the law. I followed the law. He was without sin, cast the first stone. That's fine with me, whatever you feel. I'm sorry, that's just my personal...
That's perfect.
She yelled at what it's all, that's it.
I understand that sometimes variances are the way to achieve the purpose that you try and achieve without the black and white of the law, that's having to be enforced.
Well, going through the town where you got sheds right up against people's houses and the town itself, this is not the town, per se, a main street and stuff like that. And this would not give the same appearance, perception of what you see in the towns... perception of what you see in the towns of the south. But then I recognize limitations and I follow the law. I don't break the law. I could just build it. And then the law come along and cause something else to happen. I've never been in jail. It cost me my job and I told the truth. That's fine with me.
If you get another pair of eyes on this, maybe you could still get it built. Maybe not in the exact location. It's up to you.
And you understand that we're having trouble with the lack of specificity?
Consequences are consequences.
Excuse me?
Consequences are consequences.
Okay, all right.
I live with consequences. I've lived with them all my life. You know, it's, well, from when I was younger, I do what I have to do to survive. If I have to survive this way, I'm gonna survive this shed.
So you do not want to reconsider and look at possible other configurations?
I don't, I don't know what you have, what you have. See, my condition is not gonna get any better. And I don't know how much more I got to live. And she would have to live whatever is weak beside that.
So, you need a shed?
Yes, we do.
You need a lower space. Yes, you do. And you have the ability. If this variance is not approved, you still have the ability to put the shed plenty of places on your property. So if this board did not approve it, you could still do it. You could still build it, not where you want to. But knowing what you would like to have done, it may be in your benefit to get it as close to that point as you desire by possibly tweaking what you have presented.
Is there an acre of variance?
Is there what?
Is this based on having an acre of property, though? As I mentioned last time at the meeting?
I believe if you have, what, greater than an acre, it's 50 feet, less than an acre, it's 20 feet?
Was that what it is?
Yes.
I can build a shed anyplace at any time. I don't need the board to approve anything. If that's the case...
You don't need the ZVA.
If you don't, if you don't need a variance, all you need is a building permit.
I'm gonna have to buy a golf club.
Do you wanna...
I'll get a golf club.
Do you wanna give it an adjournment till you get through the next one?
Yes.
They could talk about it and bring it back for a second call?
What if they don't want it adjourned? Because I don't want to stay here for an hour.
Well, they're talking, they're talking to each other, but they're not really able to talk to each other.
Make a decision now.
Or, or the board could take it adjournment, folks.
You should, Mrs. Vecchio, the decision should be pretty clear to you.
We need the shed.
Vote on the shed.
Say that again?
Vote on the shed.
You want us to vote on the shed?
On the variance.
On the variance, okay.
Just one, I have to apologize before we go on this. If you put the shed on the other side, I know there's a tree there. It's a shed, it's not a driveway, it's not a garage, you're not pulling your car into it and not doing anything like that, right?
Oh, yeah, it's just storage.
Storage. So you have plenty of room on the other side of the house. What, no, just let me finish. I'm trying to, trying to work with you here. So you put this on the other side, your view is not obstructing anymore. You're still close enough to your house to get to your shed. You gotta buy a tractor, correct?
I would like to.
Okay. I got a tractor. I got a little carton back. I got four acres of land. I don't know, I'm gonna put the carton back and put the tools in and drive it. So if you move it over, okay, you don't have to worry about the variance at this point. You just build your shed. And you'll have plenty of room. The tree won't be in your way because you don't have to worry about a garage door or anything else like that. You can, you can build a decent sized door with that size shed, you know, to get in and out, you know? So I'm just, just throwing this out there. So we don't have to go through this, excuse my time, here's Bordella, okay? And you know what I'm saying, okay? Because that's all you have to do and it's a problem solved. And you still got your parking spaces. And if you really wanted to, down the road, okay, if you really wanted down the road, maybe you could cut the tree and put in a driveway on the other side. You're not talking about, we're talking about 30 feet, 40 feet? You know?
To me, that would actually change the aesthetic look of the neighborhood.
Put the shed on the other side?
Put the shed on that side as opposed to that side?
Because it'd be too close to the driveway of the other people.
Isn't this house, isn't the driveway right next to yours or is it on the other side?
It is.
It's on the inside. There's a swill in between.
On the other side, it has a swill.
But the house that's here, is the driveway on the west side or the east side of the property?
Is that Joe's side?
What, the east? It's on Joe's side, which is...
I thought the driveway, I thought your driveway in the property...
It's on the right side of the property looking towards our back.
Right, so your driveway is basically run parallel to each other?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. There's just a little piece of land in between.
Right, so you just made a comment that if you put it there, it would ruin the character of the neighborhood?
Well, it would be, I think the neighbors would complain about that, really. I would wanna do it, but they can't, but...
Mr. Vecchio, you have a letter from each of your neighbors saying that they have no problem with the shed where you put it.
It says?
So you told them exactly where you put it. You showed them the exact dimensions and everything.
Well, Joe, I mean, my neighbor was there before the new shed.
Right.
The guy where the property was. And that was my main concern.
Glad to see you.
Okay, if he puts a shed over here...
Maybe so, I don't know, future.
I think you've been offered a lot of alternative suggestions as to what you can do about this.
I thought about everyone else before I would apply.
And you have your personal reasons?
The options, I have a neighbor who has a shed all the way down. But he's a young person. Couple of houses down from me. He's like four miles away from the road. He has a tractor and he's got a snowboard, I think. And I just can't deal with that, you know? It's, it's personally with me, that's all.
Understood.
My character takes over.
Absolutely, I completely understand that. Completely understand that.
I have nothing else.
No, I mean, if we're gonna vote, I'll have a comment with my vote, but, you know?
Do we have to be here? We have to be here for the vote, wouldn't we?
I'm sorry, why do you want to hear the vote?
Yes, of course you're going to be here.
Why do you want to hear the vote?
Because this way, my head is clear. I can sleep tonight.
She would love that to work with me.
Joe, any other questions or comment? Patricia?
No.
Okay, and Phil and Ed already acknowledged. Then I'll entertain a motion that we either approve or deny the Vecchio's application for a variance.
Well, begrudgingly, I will make a motion to not approve the variance application as submitted due to lack of specis...
Specificity.
Specificity. While taking into consideration your issues, your physical issues, but based on how this has been submitted, I reject, I submit to reject the application.
Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Now discussion.
Yes, discussion.
So I can comment on that?
Yes.
I, believe me, struggle with this big time because I'm an emotional creature and I'm a sympathetic creature, okay? But our job is not to be emotional and sympathetic. Our job is to enforce and interpret a certain set of codes as a jury would be in a jury trial, okay? I'm very sympathetic. And the question I had was there, is there no other option whatsoever? And maybe inconvenient, maybe a little more costly, but there are options. So my obligations are to the zoning codes. And with that in mind, painfully, I'm gonna have to agree.
Good abstain.
Well, this is just comment, we're not taking a vote.
Yeah, I got a comment.
Joe, did you say you had no comment? Pat? I just pointed...
Look at those five criteria for your input, yeah.
I was just going to point out again that criteria B, whether the benefits sought by the advocate can be achieved by some method feasible for the advocate to pursue other than an area variance, it seems to me blatantly that that's the case, that you can have a shed without getting the variance that you're requesting. And therefore, I would vote, that the way the motion is worded, that the application be denied, I would vote in favor of that motion.
Do you have any comment on C?
C is whether the requested area variance is substantial. I do as well, of course. It is substantial. And the nature of this has been demonstrated and pointed out. It could be reduced. The size of the variance that's requested could certainly be reduced.
Any others?
Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It was self-created, it is self-created inasmuch as there are definitely options. And by the insistence on putting the shed here, by not bringing in illustrations of exactly what the shed would be like, there are just too many variables here that would preclude me from approving this.
So, shall we vote?
Okay. Remember, the way that the motion is worded, it's a negative. So the motion is to deny the application. So if you agree with that, you will vote yes. And if you think that the variance should be approved, you will vote no. Joe, we start with you. Okay, we won't start with you. You understand you first. Pat, we start with you.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes. I vote no.
And I vote yes. So the application is denied.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vecchio.
Yes. Yes. Oh, yeah, that could not happen. Oh, we got that already. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, sorry it's taken so long.
I might be a freak if you're all out.
Miss Hemi requesting the height variance for the fence in the agricultural, it's an agricultural district that this property is.
Yeah.
And you look nice with tan, too. My goodness.
Do I?
It's only from here to here, right?
Yeah. I've had two t-shirt days so far, so...
Only two.
Well, today there was no sun, no. There was no tanning effect.
Okay.
This is very specific. Your fencing diagram is extremely specific.
All right, thank you. Obviously, we appreciate it, as you can imagine.
So, I'm missing the first couple of meetings, maybe one meeting that you've already...
I've only been here once, yeah.
Okay, I missed that. So if I ask questions that other people have already answered, excuse us.
No problem.
Okay. Your fencing, basically...
Great, that's...
Right, okay. Okay, you have fencing up now, some fencing up now.
We do.
Correct, okay. So the fencing that we're dealing with tonight is what?
I'm changing it from a temporary, like, right now it has a plastic netting fence that's been up for years and the deer just keep getting through it. So we're gonna change it to, or hope to change it, to the woven wire that, I mean, I don't know where you live, but Dressel's has some that's running along. Is it 208?
208.
And on Springtown Road, there are two other farms that have it. It's a common...
You have a picture of that, don't you?
No.
Okay. We kind of know what that looks like, but...
Yeah. It's narrow openings at the bottom and then as it goes up, it starts out, I think, two inches and then it goes to four inches and then it's six inches higher up. So it also keeps out some of those smaller angles.
And for standards, you use wood or metal?
It'll be actually wood. Post, yes.
You call posts as your standard?
I call posts up from what I...
I call posts, too, I've never heard of standards. I was like, oh, no.
Okay.
When you said the metal, I figured out.
Okay, so we're dealing with specifically on this diagram, all of this area?
Yeah, where, well, here. Like, here's where my driveway comes in, right?
The driveway is very long, Pat.
Yeah. So the fence would actually stay to the south of the driveway. So that land where my driveway is into the north of it would be left open, which actually keeps this neighbor very happy. This land in here is land I leased from that neighbor. So that would stay in the temporary fencing. And then...
There are no gardens here.
There are. Oh, yeah, I grow in all of that.
Okay.
Yeah. So we do have it with the temporary fence around there. So my fence would like have a gate across the drive, you know, to meet up with this fence. And then where it turns back to my own property line, we would be installing the permanent again. And then if they ever take this lease away from me, then I would have to close that because that would just leave that side open that the deer could come in. Yes.
Okay.
That's a good question. So you're actually requesting this to be fenced in as well, but would not be fencing in?
Well, I suppose that's the best idea. So that I don't have to do this again. Very smart. would be very smart.
And this colored diagram, it's all eight-foot-high fence, you just did this to show different relief, correct?
I didn't create this one, Kelly did. I think this has to do with because-
But it's just the relief, correct?
Yes.
So it's all eight-foot-high fence, so some of it's front yard, side yard.
Yes, that is what that is.
That's nice, Kelly.
Yeah, and there's two different variances involved.
Because some part is for four to eight, and the other is sixty-eight. Yeah.
The people that you leased that small section from?
Yeah.
Do they have any issue with the fence going up there?
No, no, Mary Johnson, that's who I leased that from, she and I spoke on the telephone, and she's, you know, also the one that would be affected by this part in the driveway here, so I told her what I was up to, and she said she had no problem, as long as I keep the mugwort cut on the part that she owns back here, because when she moves her yard, she doesn't like the mugwort.
Doesn't like?
It's a weed mugwort.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it grows like crazy, and if it's in the fence, then it leans, and she doesn't like that, so we cut that line all the time to keep it nice for her.
Boy, I wish you were my neighbor.
If it would take away the lease, I will do it to keep the lease.
Farmers make good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, this one does anyhow.
So, how many acres do you have?
Twenty, well, it's twenty-eight point six is my property. Yeah.
Good for you.
I think.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
When I went out and saw you, do you have anything from any of the neighbors?
No, you had told me then that I needed to get them, and I have, well, these posted, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a big sign out there, pink.
I'm a neighbor.
Oh, good, so we expect to hear from you. What are these little scraps of paper that we have here?
Well, these are letters from my neighbors that they wrote to you guys.
Oh, good, that's-
And these are emails that they wrote, well, they wrote to me, but for you.
You want to submit these to the record?
Sure, and these are the people who spoke to me on the telephone that said that they were all fine with it and didn't write letters, so those are, I don't know, I think it comes up to ten of the property owners I had to contact with no problems with fence.
Let me entertain a motion that we open the public hearing, or that the-
Since the public is waiting.
Do I, we have public? Motion made by Joe, seconded by Phil, in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just, again, for the record, you've submitted some letters from neighbors, you've submitted some emails written to you.
Yeah.
There's several names on a piece of paper that you represent, you spoke to on the phone, and they had no objection.
Yeah.
Are any of the people that you spoke to on the phone here tonight?
No.
Okay.
One's in South Carolina, I guess he used to be on your board, Jules, or Julian?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes.
Yes, he's one of my neighbors, but he called me from South Carolina, he says he's all good with it, Mary Hyer is the farmer across the street, she's all good with it, Mary Johnson is my direct neighbor, and she's fine with it. It's hard to say, I mean, Christine, it would be in her backyard, but kind of way back from her house, and Margaret Castellana, she has two properties that are on Springtown that back up to my farm, and she's the other person who called me and said she's fine with it.
And there is someone in the audience?
Yes.
Does anybody want to read these, they're all in favor of the fencing, no objections, or I'm just gonna give them to Kevin?
I think that I'm perfectly willing to take Ed's summary of the letters that have been submitted, that they are all positive, and in favor of the granting of the variance, is that correct, Ed?
That is correct.
I'm good with that.
Yes.
I'll be honest, no one sent me one that said no, that I didn't bring to you.
Well, if they were, you'd probably-
That's what I figured.
They might be at the meeting, which makes me slide the rooms, but it's all good.
Any other questions or comments on the board at this point?
No, I was out there with Ed, and it's pretty clear to me the situation, I'm good.
Then I'll entertain any comments from the audience on this matter.
As Mr. Morialov said, farmers make good neighbors.
Would you do us a favor and identify yourself for the record?
My name is Christine Lutacay Mogan.
No relation. We do know each other, but no relation.
So, so we can look at her positively.
You stole my line, thank you very much.
I figured, I figured.
Do not hold that against her.
Kira has been a good neighbor, and what's important to me is that this is land zoned for agricultural use, it doesn't button our land, I think I'd like to see it stay as an agricultural project, particularly if it's organic.
And it is organic here, right?
Yeah. I think not only is the fence vital to her operation, it's gonna be vital to any farmer's operation, so I think that meets one of your criteria, and what else? She's been a great neighbor, and- Oh, is that going, may I ask how that's going to affect the deer run between her property and hers? Well, she already has a fence, so the deer population has already adjusted, you know, the deer traffic already changed when she put the fence in, we don't get a lot of traffic in and out now, I don't know exactly where they go, but they don't come in our yard as much. Does she have a deer garden? No, they don't, I mean, I use some-
She has a beautiful flower garden.
And I'm sorry, where is she on this?
She's on, where's Springtown?
Springtown, yeah.
And you are not a farmer?
Probably.
I'm not a farmer, no.
This one or this one?
So she's east?
Christine, you have kind of a white piece, do you know your-
It's two sixty-five.
No, this doesn't have those, it has the SBLs, do you know yours?
No.
So you're east, basically, correct?
Yeah, she's on the east side of that, yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Wait, put your finger on it?
East.
She's somewhere, either she's this one or this one.
Wherever your chickens are.
Yeah.
Your chickens are over there.
Now, they're over here.
Oh, they're moving everywhere.
They roll.
They roll. Is that that commercial, there's gonna be a picture of a chicken?
Oh, I don't know, I don't have a TV.
That's the best commercial out there.
It's a free-range chicken, sends pictures from all over, all over this country.
Well, they're definitely free-range.
Okay. I saw a statement from my husband who could not make this meeting, if I could read that?
Would you please?
I'm a registered voter residing at two sixty-five Springtown Road in the town of Green Falls, I'm writing in support of that application, ZBA twenty fifteen, Kira Kenny, for the purposes of allowing the installation of a durable deer fence on her property. Kira is a fine neighbor and deserves every chance to succeed with her farm. In addition to this, the two farms to the north of her on Springtown already have existing durable deer fencing. In the spirit of fairness, her request should be permitted, I hope you act accordingly. Sincerely, Mark Sager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, oh, well, I guess, do you want to read it, or just give it to the other?
I have a question for you, which really has no bearing on this applicant, but would you feel the same way if it was a, could it be a cow farm or anything like that?
Sure, it could be.
Could it be, okay.
I mean, I wanted at one point to be a dairy farm, but that didn't happen.
And-
In the act district, you could, I mean, you could be any type of farm.
Be any type of farm?
Yeah.
The fencing, pressure-treated posts?
They're going to be the newer version of pressure-treated pine.
Okay, and the fence and the posting, how long should they be?
Their lifespan?
Their lifespan, yeah, thank you.
Well, the woven wire should be almost permanent, and the wood posts, I believe, are thirty-year kind of thing, without real replacements.
And you're gonna have a gate at the end?
The gate, no, no, the gate is up here, because we don't have the fence down there by the road, so the gate is up here where my own-
So that's where it's gonna be?
Right.
So-
It's gonna stay where it is, yeah.
Oh, wait, your driveway's here?
Yeah.
I was thinking there was gonna be a gate there, so there won't be a gate there, you're actually gonna fence in the property from the north of the fence and come down, got it?
Yeah.
But the gate on Springtown, I mean, the fence on Springtown is still going to be nine feet?
Eight, yeah, yeah.
These questions may seem irrelevant, and I think perhaps they are, you have a CSA?
We have that also, yeah, we do markets in the city, and then we have a CSA at the farm, yeah.
Where do you market in the city?
In Brooklyn, Grand Army Plaza and Fort Greene.
And do you also sell to individuals who would come to your farm and perhaps want to buy some eggs or something?
Not too much of that, I mean, my CSA is set up a little bit differently, where it's a debit system, and things actually are set up with prices, so people could come to purchase something just at random without being in the CSA, although it's almost never happened, I mean, I really haven't advertised that, but-
And you don't have a stand, a farm stand or anything like?
No, it's only open on Wednesdays during the CSA season from four to eight, that's the time that people come in and out.
Linda, can I clarify CSA, just from my edification?
Community-supported agriculture?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, please, always ask people, you know, questions like that, because we assume certain things.
Good, so your livelihood basically is in New York?
Oh, the city, you mean? I'm like, wait, yes, well, in New York. Yes, that's the bulk of my sales, we do markets there year-round, I mean, this winter, we had a couple of sales at the farm because it was too cold to go to the city, like, it's outdoor market, so when it's so cold, then we had a couple impromptu sales at the farm inside the greenhouse, but-
You don't do Union Square?
No, I used to, but I quit.
Again, relevant legally, I ask, well. You don't have to answer that.
It was an extremely long day where you would make a lot of very, like, two-dollar sales for somebody who's a personal chef, or somebody who needs a receipt, and I really felt like everybody was there waiting to be discovered instead of buy vegetables, and I needed to sell the vegetables, so I quit that market.
I just had one last comment slash question, right now?
Is it Mel?
I think it's Mel.
He's gonna talk about a fence.
Well, we're gonna talk about the fence, right now, deer are getting in and eating your crops.
Yeah.
And you have a permit to take care-
We have a nuisance permit.
You have a nuisance permit, so with this fence, that should-
We hope to get out, I mean, they do still sometimes get in through the gate or, you know-
But not as many.
Oh, God, no, 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 no.
Why does a nuisance permit allow you to do it?
Shoot the deer.
Take care of the deer.
Finish the deal with the deer.
Yeah.
I don't think fence sounds like a better option.
Yeah, I mean, considering, I mean, the nuisance permit, you can shoot up until eleven o'clock at night, so you can put lights on the deer, so when we've had to do it, the people go out at nighttime, because obviously, the deer are generally not there in the middle of the day, easier, safer, whatever, I don't know, but, yeah.
You don't sell, do you?
The people who hunt actually eat the meat, they take it and eat it, and once you get, if you get above ten deer, then you have to donate every other one through a program with Cornell, which is Hunters for the Hungry, I don't know if you know about this?
The fence that's going to, the rail trail, how far is that distance?
It's a pretty good distance, it's probably twenty feet or so, like, the rail trail where I am, most of it actually drops down and gets kind of wet, and then it, like, I don't know what, there's some little, like, hump that goes down, and then it goes back up into my property, and so, and there's also a whole bunch of older trees there, so, you know, we're going for the path of least resistance, so we will be probably twenty to thirty feet.
So people won't even notice it at all?
Well, in the winter, they'll be able to see it, I'm sure, but not like it's gonna be hunter orange sticking out, it's, you know, it's gray, yeah, like everything else in the winter, so maybe they'll see it less in the winter, I don't know.
Several times, the trees will block it, yeah. Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion that we either approve or deny this, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
We have to go through the-
Page three.
There are these very important five questions, yes?
They are, one, two, three.
Okay.
The applicant should be prepared to address the following considerations at the time of the meeting, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance.
No, I think this is in complete character with my neighborhood.
Whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
No.
And I think the comment that I would make regarding that is that you do have a nuisance permit to shoot the deer, and that is less desirable than-
And less effective, yes.
And less effective than putting up a fence. Whether the requested area variance is substantial?
I shall say yes, because it's a very long fence.
Yes, I think you're right, yes. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district.
I do not believe so.
And having been out there myself, I have seen many other properties that are similarly fenced. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals, which will not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance.
Well, I did choose to farm, but we'll have to go back to, it was, what was it? God's fault? For creating those darn deer, there we go, I think, no, it was not self-created.
And I could go again?
Yes. No, it was not self-created.
Okay, in that case, there are no more comments, I'll entertain a motion that we either approve or deny this request for a variance.
I move that we approve this area variance, variance.
Is there a second? Second by Phil? Okay, Joe?
I approve. Yes.
Phil?
I approve. Yes.
Yes, and I vote yes as well, thank you very much, Kira, for coming.
Isn't that bad, was it?
No, 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 not bad.
Thank you for coming, too.
Thank you very much. Oh, am I allowed to?
Yes, yes, yes.
I was having a discussion with Kelly.
Yeah.
You can approve the minutes even if they weren't here.
Strangely enough, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Linda and Phil are the only ones who were at that, who were at this meeting, who were at march of the meetings.
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve minutes that wasn't here, what am I?
Because you're not really, you're not approving what happened, you're approving what you're reading.
Oh, okay.
You're approving the summary, I think.
And essentially, essentially, based upon, based upon this board's practice of almost verbatim minutes by the secretary, there's a reliance that what is in the minutes is a true representation of what happened, if it isn't, the members who are present-
Got it.
-should tell you.
Got it.
And if they don't, you can rely on the minutes.
Okay, we'll give our attention then to the march minutes.
March, yeah. So we don't have to abstain?
No, you do not abstain, not necessarily.
There's not much to abstain.
I still don't like approving something I wasn't here for.
Okay. That's what we used to do, but it's not necessary.
If we're ready, I'll entertain a motion that the minutes be approved.
I'll make the motion to approve them, yes.
And I will second it. In favor, Joe? Phil?
Aye.
Ed?
Yes.
Yes.
And of course, I vote yes as well. Okay. Any other new business that anybody would like to bring up?
I have nothing.
I'm good.
We have a relatively new board, and I'm very delighted to have the new members, and I'm even more delighted to have the old, old members, old members, right, right, and of course, I'll, I'll entertain a motion now that we adjourn.
So, vote.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all, very-
Thank you.